For Monday, November 18th, 2024. And tonight, we have with us fourth grade Girl Scout troop five, six, one, nine, four from Hawthorne School. And they've had a little education on civics before we started the meeting tonight. And they will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you will come right up to the front here and face the flag. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Guys, all come up here. Everybody come up here.
Face the flag. All right. Got two more coming up. All right, you ready? Go ahead.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, girls. I did want to note that we had an executive session just before we started. One of the topics that is listed on the agenda was setting a price for the sale of real estate. And I wanted to just note, because I've received a number of communications about the green space issue, and I wanted to say that that is not the topic for which we held our executive session. Moving on to receipt of written communications from the public, is there anyone that has a... Oh, you want to do roll call?
Yeah.
Very traditional. All right, go ahead.
Bastido?
Here.
Nardini?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Erby? Absent. Deuter? Absent. Vremus? Hill?
Here.
Shenko?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Bram?
Here.
Cahill? Absent. Toledo?
Here.
Park? Absent. Nudera?
Here.
Ten present, four absent.
Ten present, four absent. We have a quorum. Thank you, Clerk Tamer. Item three, receipt of written communications from the public. Is there any member of the public that has a written communication which they would like to deliver to the council? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on.
Two were posted.
Yes, and we have two. Alderman, no, we have two that were posted in advance. Public forum, is Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed in for public forum this evening?
Yes, we have Sarah Enright.
All right, if anyone who's signed up, please approach the back microphone there, state your name. Address is optional, and you have three minutes to speak on whatever topic you feel like. Please proceed.
Hello, my name is Sarah Enright. I live in the Fourth Ward. The Keep Elmhurst Green advocacy group understands that council members may have been considering a compromise on the green space between Schiller and Third, which would entail selling some but not all of the land. Here is what we see as issues with a compromise. Selling part of the land now would not stop the city from selling the rest of the land in the future. Thirty-one trees and bushes sit on the end lots at Schiller and Third Streets alone, which would be lost to development with this compromise. A forty-year-old tree holds over 5,000 gallons of water in its leaf canopy alone, and much more than that in its root system. For those trees on the compromised lots, that equals roughly 100,000 gallons of water over time, taxing our infrastructure. Select members of council have suggested green space neighbors seem entitled and territorial of the space, but by developing the end lots, the city is essentially cutting off the space from the rest of Elmhurst. Without being viewable from Schiller and Third, residents won't even know the green space exists, is there for access. You would effectively be creating a space that is exclusive to the closest neighbors. And most importantly, we ask you to review the numbers. The city originally, and maybe generously, estimated they could generate $5 to $6 million from the sale of the entire space of ten to 12 lots. But assuming all existing ordinances and codes are followed, we estimate a compromise or the sale of five lots would generate $2 million at best. The projected property tax and new home sales tax comes further down the road. This puts only a slight dent in what the city needs to fund a new police station, a new metro station, or any other major project. A compromise in selling part of this land will still require the city to come up with another way to raise funds. It also puts an increased burden on the environment, reduces the small percentage of open space within our community, increases the risk of flooding in an area that experienced the impacts of major flooding events, and is already short on remediation or storage as outlined in a work report. Development would also increase the population, putting more pressure on what little green space we have, which is less than neighboring communities. You've heard from more than 1,000 residents on our change.org petition, over 100 residents through email, 620 Keep Elmhurst Green Facebook page members, and now several community-based organizations, including the League of Women Voters, Citizens Climate Lobby, Preserve Elmhurst, Elmhurst Cool Cities Coalition, and Elmhurst Flooding, asking you to save this space. We urge council members to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Park District to preserve this space exactly as it is today. Please reject a compromise in developing any of this land and look for other ways to fund these projects. Thank you to those of you who have already expressed your support.
Thank you. Clerk Tamer?
Barbara Lonergan. My name is Barbara Lonergan, and I'm also speaking on behalf of Keep Elmhurst Green. We ask the city to find creative ways to fund projects instead of decimating irreplaceable green space. In finance committee discussions about police station funding, there's been talk of increasing the hotel sales tax. This makes sense. Our police department is often called to hotels for noise disturbances or to break up physical altercations. So along those same lines, let's look at the Police Department's 2023 annual report. A large percentage of police time was dedicated to parking and traffic violations, 9,000 parking violations and 8,000 traffic violations in 2023 alone. Can we increase fines to help fund the police station? Or consider this: In a past issue of The Front Porch, in the mayor's message, it states that multi-unit developments and the residents who live there do not increase vehicle traffic in Elmhurst. It is assumed that residents in multi-unit buildings commute by train to work. If these residents are metro users, would it make sense to implement an impact fee for future multi-unit developments to help pay for the metro station? We are all aware of the extensive time and thought put into paying for stormwater remediation. In the end, the city implemented a simple half-percentage increase in the retail sales tax, an increase that was overwhelmingly accepted by the council and the community and created no fallout with shoppers, diners, and consumers. Is it feasible to consider another quarter or half percent increase? We ask council to continue discussions on how to best finance the police station and the metro station, knowing that the sale of the green space offers only a small blip in what is needed to fund these projects. The sale of the green space, or even part of the space, will have permanent impacts on the neighborhood, the community, and the environment. Additionally, we ask which of our council members will speak up to save the space? Will it be our one Sierra Club climate champion on council, our one Cool Cities member, two Elmhurst aldermen who live in the midst of naturally wooded areas and understand the impact of losing that space would mean to their neighborhoods and the city as a whole? Or the two aldermen who represent the Ward Four neighborhood? Or the remaining council who have heard nothing but support from constituents to save the space? Or at least three aldermen who are leaving council who have nothing to lose beyond their legacy? Who will go on record to save the green space?
Thank you. Clerk Tamer?
That's it, Mayor.
All right. That is the end of the list of people who signed in to make public comment. Is there any member in the audience that would like to make public comment that did not have an opportunity to sign in? If so, please raise your hand. All right, if you'll proceed to the microphone and state your name. Address is optional.
Paula Wolf.
Paula, if you pull the microphone down just to your height, thank you.
I'm Paula Wolf. I live at Larch. And these ladies, they just presented a wonderful case, and they did it so well. I just want to say I appreciate them doing it. I don't understand why with everything this city wants, they would even consider giving up this green space. It's a drop in the bucket compared to the money you want to spend. And after that mess at 292 Arlington, losing all those trees, and you heard how much people didn't want them to be ruined, chopped down, lost, why on earth is this even an issue for a beautiful piece of green space that's not going to gain you a lot, except you'll fill that up with big houses on small lots? It's a shame. It's a waste. And it seems like when I speak to elderly people that I associate with in Elmhurst, we don't understand a lot. As a senior citizen, we don't feel like we're getting a lot. We feel like we're losing a lot. We have a better... We think with our ages, we have a better understanding of the value of things. And we appreciate everybody on the council wanting to give of their time. But let's face it, you have a lot of power, and you're still younger. And when you start talking about the millions and millions of dollars that you want to spend for this city, you're probably still working, you probably still get raises. Senior citizens aren't so lucky. We think we've prepared for living. And we've come to Elmhurst over the years, quite a few years, and thought we had a future here. But I feel like those that I talk to feel like we're being pushed out just because you have free will to see how much money should be spent. And when it comes to our police department, I truly believe they need vests, they need guns, they need phones, they need radios. But fix the police station. Don't bulldoze it and put it into a landfill. And even if you temporarily put it over on Park, you're going to have to spend a lot of money. And when they can be moved back to another area, you're going to have to fix that building. Is that going to go into a landfill, too? I know the generation that's coming after all of us, they're very conservative about it. My granddaughter, 25 years old, it's in the front of her mind. And I think we're a generation of wasteful people. So I'd like you to think more about that, the green space, the trees. Don't make another decision like what happened on Arlington and I'm sure on other lots, because our homes are sold more to developers than to anybody else. And what do they do? They knock it down, it goes to a landfill, we lose trees. And we do have an issue of flooding in this city. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, thank you, Girl Scouts, for coming out tonight.
Thank you for having us.
All right, item nine, announcements. Are there any announcements from the dais? Clerk?
Okay, so this Wednesday, the City of Elmhurst Commission on Youth is hosting at Sandberg Middle School at 7:00 PM our substance abuse prevention evening. We are having, we're combining with Glenn Bar Parenting Series as well as the 525 Foundation, Becky Savage. Nick Schuff will be providing information. Parents and kids need to know about what it means to be a young person using substances. Nick was featured in the movie and book Beautiful Boy. So Glenn Bar Parenting Series is having him, and we are live streaming in with them for the first half of the event. The second half is Becky Savage from the 525 Foundation. We had her here, I believe it was 2019, and was super effective, and we're having her back. And she's going to share this story in person at that point about her two boys, Nick and Jack, who on the same night passed away after taking just one pill after a night of drinking. And the 525 Foundation comes from their hockey, that they were hockey players, and just all the advocacy that she's done. So it's a very moving presentation, and we're looking forward to having both of them here in Elmhurst.
Thank you. Any other announcements? All right, we'll move on to item six, the consent agenda. Clerk Tamer, please read the agenda.
Six point one minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on November 4th, 2024. Six point two, committee of the whole meeting minutes of the city council on November 4th, 2024. Six point three, committee of the whole meeting minutes of the city council on November 12th, 2024. Six point four, accounts payable, November 18th, 2024, $2,682,843.93. Six point five, appointment of Erica Blawatt to Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. Six point six, referral request to review zoning on food trucks, trailers. Six point seven, referral Glenview Avenue and Third Street intersection. Six point eight, report, case 24P15, conditional use permit, EYFP 501 West Lake Street. Six point nine, report, case 24P16, preliminary and final plan unit development with site development allowances in plot of subdivision, Salt Creek School, 980 and 994 South Riverside Drive. Six point 10, report, property workers' compensation, inland marine crime and cyber insurance renewals. Six point 11, report, senior freeze, CIRC rate. Six point 12, report, veteran active duty, full-time military vehicle sticker. Six point 13, report, Spring Road Business Association Winter Fest report. Six point 14, report, 2025 CMMS assistance. Six point 15, report, digester three maintenance and cleaning. Six point 16, an ordinance annexing certain property to the City of Elmhurst, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois. Six point 17, an ordinance waiving bid and acceptance, accepting the proposals of Flock Safety Group, Inc., for the purchase of six public safety cameras, one public safety camera, license plate reader camera, and authorizing the contract renewal of eight license plate reader cameras. Six point 18, a resolution regarding the release of certain closed session minutes.
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove either for further discussion or to vote against? All right, Clerk Tamer, call the...
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby? Absent.
Sorry, did I get a motion?
No, you didn't. That's a very good one.
I don't know who's in charge tonight.
That's why I hesitated, sorry.
All right, were you making a motion, Alderman Bastido?
I'm taking a motion, sorry.
All right. Second alderman, Bram, don't change your vote. All right, go ahead. Take it from the top.
Bram, a second? Okay. Sorry. Okay, Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby's absent. Deuter's absent. Vremus?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Shenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill? Absent. Toledo?
Aye.
Park? Absent. Nudera?
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays, four absent.
Ten ayes, zero nays, four absent. The consent agenda passes. Committee report seven, seven point one. Clerk Tamer, please read the report.
I don't think I have that here. Hold on one second. Thank you.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance Council Affairs and Administrative Services Committee that the city council approve the City of Elmhurst 2024 tax levy in the amount of $20,821,197, representing a 3.6% increase in the city's tax levy compared to 2023 taxes extended. Furthermore, it is the recommendation of the PCAAS Committee that the city council approve the abatement of all current debt service obligations for the city's general obligation bonds in the amount of $7,492,884. The PCAAS Committee also recommends that the city council direct the city attorney to prepare the 2024 tax levy ordinance and appropriate debt service abatement ordinances. Signed, Noel Toledo, Chair, Chris Johnson, Vice Chair, James Nudera, Alderman, and Rex Erby, Alderman.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to bring this report forward to council? Motion to approve by Alderman Toledo and a second by Alderman Jensen. Alderman Toledo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to all the residents, committee members, and staff for their help and thoughtful discussion on this topic over the last few meetings. Tonight's report on the 2024 City of Elmhurst property tax levy is a recommendation with the full support of the members of the Finance Committee. Our recommendation is to increase the city and library tax levy to $20,821,197. This is an increase to last year's levy amount of a little over $720,000, or a 3.6% increase compared to last year. All of the recommended increase in the levy is due to the increase in pension obligations for our police and fire department employees, as well as in retirement expenses for our IMRF qualifying employees. You can see those itemized increases in Schedule A. The Elmhurst City Council has consistently contributed, actuarially, say that five times, determined pension payments every year to ensure that both our public service employees' retirements are funded, while also ensuring that we continue to reduce our unfunded pension liability, which helps both current and future taxpayers. Additionally, the committee recommends we continue to abate all general obligation bond payments, as we have done in years past. This is a total of over $7 million in the tax year of 2024 of principal and interest payments that the taxpayer does not have to pay, but instead is paid by other revenue sources that the city receives. I would also like to share a point about inflation and how it compares to the levy. Between the years 2018 to 2023, the Consumer Price Index increased 22%. Over that same period, the City of Elmhurst's tax levy increased by only 11%, or half as much as inflation went up. What this means is that the City of Elmhurst is quite responsible with the funds that it receives while continuing to provide superior service to its residents. Thank you for your attention, and I look forward to your support.
Thank you, Chair Toledo. We'll open this up for discussion. Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. I particularly appreciate the last point that Chair Toledo made with respect to inflation. Having shared public works before, it's astronomical, the amount that these projects have gone up. And I'm super happy that we've been able to manage city business in such a way that, you know, we have 22% CPI, and we've increased over the same period of time 11%. I think that's super important for a lot of reasons. And what I also think is important is that our pensions. In, you know, a time in which we have collective bargaining agreements, it's our obligation to make sure that these pensions are funded. And I'm very proud of what we've done as a city to show our support and backing for our first responders. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Brennan. All right, seeing no further discussion, thank you, Chair Toledo. Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby? Absent. Deuter? Absent. Vremus?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Shenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Absent. Toledo? Aye.
Park? Absent. Nudera?
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays, four absent.
Ten ayes, zero nays, four absent. Report seven point one is adopted. Thank you. Reports and recommendations of elected officials. Yeah, I'm going, well, two items, I guess. I'll take them actually out of order, maybe three items. So we're, per our city code presented, we're going to present the status for referrals not yet disposed of for more than 90 days. Alderman Erby brought this to our attention. We have, since the ordinance was adopted, we post them regularly on our website, but we are, need to comply with this. So we are going to put, we posted what these referrals are, and these are only the ones that are more than 90 days past referral. Item two is I'd like to thank the senior commission led by Chair Kathy Jordan for inviting me to present at the Outstanding Senior Citizen Service Award Program last Thursday evening. It's really remarkable to hear the kinds of volunteer service that our seniors have dedicated to our community, many of them who've been volunteering for many, many years. So thank you for that. The 41st Annual Dan Gibbons Turkey Trot will, of course, be held Thanksgiving morning, November 28th, with road closures starting at 6:00 AM in the downtown area. It's already happening around 8:00 AM. The charity run starts at 9:00 AM. Information is at www.dangibbonsurkytrot.org, so I hope to see many of you out there. Lastly, tonight I'm sharing a compiled video that illustrates the critical deficiencies and challenges of our current police station and what our officers face daily. This video is comprehensive. It may seem a bit long, but essentially, we've taken nine shorter videos, and without intermission, we've merged them all into one so that you can see them as one presentation. For your convenience, each of these videos will be posted for viewing on our website, elmhurst.org, in case you want to go back and look at them again. As we've been talking about this new police station, it's hard for people, and even some of the speakers who we heard tonight, to say, "Just fix the building. Why do we need a new police station? It looks pretty good from the outside." And I think every alderman has now had an opportunity to tour our police station, and you probably know what a lot of the deficiencies are. These videos will help us explain to the public why we are talking about a new police station. So they illustrate the condition of our police facility. It's not just about infrastructure, it's about the safety of our officers, the accessibility of services, and the long-term security of our community. I encourage you to take the time to watch these, you'll be here, I guess, to watch them again at your leisure, and stay informed as we work together to a solution that will serve Elmhurst police officers, police department for years to come. So with that, I don't know who rolls it, but...
Cassandra.
Cassandra, thank you.
I'm Michael McLean, Chief of Police for the City of Elmhurst. As you may have heard, the city has been discussing the facility needs of the Elmhurst Police Department. In 2016, our police station began having serious mechanical and structural needs to its police facility. The city hired an architectural firm to do a study of our building, and in 2018, determined that a series of repairs, renovations, and additions were necessary to meet the facility needs of the Elmhurst Police Department. After the deficiencies in the Elmhurst Police Station became evident, the city hired a public safety architectural firm to do a study. Their space needs analysis determined that the building needed several million dollars in repair and also required at least 20,000 square feet to accommodate modern police needs. The Elmhurst City Council has been discussing ways to address the facility needs of the Elmhurst Police Department for several years. They've boiled it down to three options. The first, simply repair the existing building and not add any additional space. The second option is to add on to the existing facility and renovate it. And the final option is to build a modern police facility.
One of the most significant costs of any project is the replacement of the HVAC system. Our air conditioning chiller has failed beyond repair, and our heating boiler is past due for replacement. The estimated cost to replace these items is anywhere between $1 to $3 million. After our police station's air conditioning system failed in 2016, the city began renting a chiller for the side of the building from 2017 onward. It's a little loud and causes some disruption outside and also takes up a portion of our parking lot. The way the rental chiller functions is it pipes chilled water into the building via these rubber hoses and into the top blowers on the third floor. Without it, the temperature inside the building would rise to would rise to close to 100 degrees. In 2019, our police station suffered from a catastrophic plumbing failure where a sprinkler pipe burst in the second floor. It flooded the entire station, causing several hundred thousand dollars of damage and requiring the police department to stop many of its operations. Since that pipe break in 2019, we've had other cast iron pipes in the police station fail as well, most notably a sewage pipe that failed in January of 2024. One of the major exterior issues that we are researching for the building is the front brick columns. Each of the seven columns has broken off near the top and now has suspended brick hanging over the public entrance of the Elmhurst Police Station. Policing has changed dramatically over the last several decades. Our officers now utilize much more equipment than they did in the 1980s when our police station was designed. We have evidence equipment, medical equipment, new ways to police Elmhurst with new types of vehicles, including bike patrol and electric vehicles, that our station was never designed to hold. The original design of the Elmhurst Police Station could not anticipate the equipment used today for modern policing. Our officers now carry AEDs and medical equipment, drones, tasers, body cameras, and numerous other pieces of equipment that have now become stored in hallways throughout the building. Ideally, our police officers would have an equipment room on the first floor where they could access the equipment they'd need in the field on their way out to their patrol cars. When the Elmhurst Police Station was designed in the 1980s, there were very few female police officers. Since that time, our agency has diversified, and we have many more female officers and are running out of space to One of the issues to be addressed is the safety and security at the rear of our police station. This area is highly trafficked by employees who enter the building and exit during the beginning and ends of their shifts, and also it's where our police officers bring those in custody into the rear sally port, which leads into our booking room. Members of the public can actually see into the inside of our police station in this private area from the parking garage directly behind us. The police department's lockup facility is a high liability area for both employees and those that are in our custody. The Elmhurst Police Department is responsible to keep everybody safe in this room. However, there are a number of areas that could use improvement in here. There are sharp edges on many of the furnishings inside this room, and officers have poor ergonomics in that they have to turn their back to prisoners while they are processing them. Our cells are also in need of an upgrade, as the doors can be used to hurt police officers.
I'm Alexander Kropnik, one of the range officers here with the Elmhurst Police Department. We're currently at the firearms range. This is where we conduct monthly firearms training. The range equipment is original to the building and over 30 years old. It is obsolete and intermittently functional. The range backstop is constructed of steel and requires regular maintenance. Due to the construction, it also presents a greater risk of ricochet. One of the major obstacles our range presents while conducting firearms training is the inability to fire rifle rounds. The range was not constructed to handle the high velocity rounds.
The Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board requires police officers to complete scenario-based training hours each year to ensure officers can handle crisis situations. Scenario-based training can be conducted with simulators or in specially-equipped training rooms. Our station lacks scenario-based training facilities, so officers must instead train in hallways or other spaces that don't allow for complete training programs. This room is currently at capacity and out of space to hold more evidence. We are currently holding approximately 15,000 pieces of evidence and have begun storing items of evidence in boxes on the floor. A solution to increase the amount of storage for evidence must be found. Strong public safety today requires law enforcement agencies to monitor many pieces of technology to keep their communities safe. Our front desk control room was not designed as a real-time crime center. Instead, the few cameras available in the building are mounted in places where the front desk officer cannot see them. Modern public safety requires police departments to utilize many pieces of technology to keep their communities safe. Our front desk needs to be modernized so that our personnel can monitor the cameras Due to space constraints, our police officers combine separate functions into the same room. Our patrol officers routinely write their reports in the same room as they package evidence, including controlled substances that can contain fentanyl in the evidence packaging corner. A safer setup for our officers would be to separate the report-writing area from the evidence packaging area so that officers would not be exposed to controlled substances while they write their police reports. Many of the spaces in the Elmhurst Police Station are undersized and make it difficult for our officers to work. Evidence technicians routinely have to process vehicles that are involved in crimes, and they do that inside this evidence technician bay. However, the walls are very tight, and the officers have difficulty processing vehicles. Modern police facilities generally separate secure and not secure spaces from each other. Due to space constraints, the detective lobby houses three private areas: the interview room, the social workers office, and the second-floor public bathroom. These areas should be private and separate to provide a safe space, not an invasion of privacy. A significant issue facing our building is that it's not compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act. It was designed before the ADA went into effect, and we have employees and members of the public that have difficulty accessing the various rooms inside. Employees and members of the public using wheelchairs must push their way through doorways, as
All right, thank you for your attention. As you know, this is our initial effort to start advising and educating the public about the need that we are talking about for our police facility. I won't go into detail now because you just spent nine or 10 minutes watching a video, but there are a lot of other indirect needs. One of the things I've talked about with people, for example, is that when we're at a time when police recruits are hard to come by. We used to have tasks that we'd offer for police officer, and we would have, I don't even know what the number was, maybe 100 people, maybe more, apply, and other police departments had the same result. These days, there's a much smaller pool. Sometimes we only have a few to choose from. I see departments like Chicago lowering their standards. We're essentially competing with officers who might look at our department, and they might look at one that is similar. I toured Downers Grove and their new facility, and I may bring in a video to show you what a modern, not glamorous, but functional new police facility looks like, and I think that when police officers go out and say, "Well, I'm going to spend my career in one place or the other," they're more likely to choose a community that has a modern facility where they can spend their time. I'm not going to go any deeper. This is really just an initial presentation. As I say, it'll be present on the website, and we'll have more discussion about it. Unless anyone has any comments at this time, we will pick it up again. So, that concludes my remarks. Next, under, next report, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to finish that, I want to thank Cassandra Straff and especially Molly Arnold, who put all that together for us, and of course, Chief in his Oscar role in that, and I assure you, no police officers were hurt in the making of that video, including Commander Mandat, who you may recognize in a couple of roles there. Some updates that next week with Thanksgiving, the garbage will be delayed one day, and then the week after that is the final free leaf pickup at Your Curve. So, that's December 4th through the 6th. That's posted on our website. If you could push that out on your social media, we appreciate it too. And then Holly Trolley starts up November 30th, runs through December 28th, and then is noon to midnight on Saturdays.
All right, are there any other reports from elected officials? Seeing none, we'll go on to other business. Is there any other business to be brought before the council this evening? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman motion, Schenko. Second Alderman, Bastido. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say nay. All right, we are adjourned. We will take about a five-minute break, and then we will go into session as the Committee of the Whole. Thank you.